Vice President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a moment of silence, please? Roll call, Meg.
Counselor Coles. Here.
Counselor Estrada.
Here.
Counselor Shamp.
Here.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Present.
Counselor Sturts.
Here.
Counselor Frye.
Here.
All members are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Welcome back, Counselor Frye.
You're welcome.
Okay. Let's move on with the approval of prior meeting's minutes. We have a couple sets in here.
Motion moved by Counselor Shamp and second by Counselor Estrada.
Counselor Shamp?
I got a quick question. What was amended, then?
It was in italics.
The italics.
In your minutes of March 2nd, it's in italics.
There were two things.
Yeah.
If you go back to the issue with Martine.
Last page, it looks like.
There are two areas.
The italics stuff. There's some more italics. Probably there's italics that need to be changed.
It's in italics. Other Martines.
Oh, the Martines. Okay, yeah. I think we got it.
So our motion is, you know, taking care of the March 2 amendment, March 16.
Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Shamp?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Six eight zero nays. Motion carries.
Names of individuals wishing to address council. First of all, we're going to start with the administer oath of office for Anthony Imber. Come on up. Is this one your family?
Yes, ma'am.
Very nice.
Got a great fan crowd.
Huh?
You've got a great fan crowd.
That's a great fan crowd, yeah. Welcome. Okay, let's see. So you can be seen here. I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand and I'll say it real slow so you can say it after me, okay? Okay. I'm going to say "I" and then you state the name. Okay. "I solemnly swear."
Solemnly swear.
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The constituent of the State of Ohio, sorry.
Constituent of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Wausau.
And the Charter of the City of Wausau.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of the patrol officer.
Of the office of the patrol officer.
Wausau Police Department.
Wausau Police Department.
For the City of Wausau.
For the City of Wausau.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my continuance.
During my continuance.
And set office.
And set office.
Congratulations. Sorry about that.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, John. Constitution.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Steve Jackson and Mike Pryor coming in from INTV to give us a little update.
Mike Pryor? Good evening. My name's Michael Pryor. I'm the station manager for INTV. I've currently been working for INTV for two years. I handle the day-to-day operations with the help of Rich Badorf and the rest of the INTV board. Since I've started managing the station, there are several things that I've wanted to address: the overall look and feel of our station, the programming, the picture and sound quality, and our online presence. Here are just a few things about INTV that I think the viewers and council members would find helpful. It is a nonprofit station that has been around since 1995. With the help of students from WHS, we're able to couple local events and give the students professional experience in a work setting. INTV relies heavily on the donations from the City of Wausau as well as the people and the businesses in the Fulton County area. We have a contract with Time Warner Cable that allows INTV to broadcast in Wausau, Delta, Archibald, Fayette, Lyons, and Metamora. We also have a Facebook page and a website where you can access streaming videos from YouTube. We offer all our programming on DVDs as well. I'm mainly here today to talk about the equipment updates that our station is in dire need of to run more efficiently. Right now, all our programming runs off of six standard DVD decks, which limits our station from taking on more weekly programming. This method also runs risk of time code errors occurring while a disc is playing during a broadcast. And basically, an automated hard drive system would eliminate this problem. INTV needs to adapt to the newer technology, and that would require an automated hard drive system. The station would be able to run more programming at a higher quality of sound and picture. All programming that we receive on DVDs would be digitized into a computer and programmed ahead of time instead of manually inserting a disc each day. Another piece of equipment that INTV needs is a mini tricaster. This piece of equipment would allow for multi-cameras as well as live editing during a broadcast. It would really take our sports coverage to the next level and give the people at home watching a better view of the game. We don't just cover sports and city council meetings, though. Here's a list of a few of the things we also cover in the community. We broadcast five different church masses that play every week. We cover the Wausau fireworks, fallen soldiers program at the VFW, the Memorial Day Parade, Wausau Christmas Parade. We cover the Wausau homecoming events, midget football under the lights. We also do the color run. And during new elections for Wausau City Council, we host a show called Meet the Candidates. Some of the Wausau school events that we cover include speech team competitions, prom, spring arts, graduation, Freedom Shrine, Academic Hall of Fame, Grandparents' Day programs, musicals, choir band, and corral shows. We are always looking to take on more programming, too, so just let us know if you have any ideas and we'll try to get the events covered. I hope all this information was helpful. If INTV can meet its current list of needs, it would allow the station to maintain as well as produce better programming. There are endless possibilities for the future of our station, and we would just like to take the time to thank the City of Wausau, the citizens of our community, and the local businesses that help keep INTV running and allowing us to serve the community. Thank you.
Do you have any quotes at all about what it would cost for the mini tricaster and the hard drive that you're looking for?
For the automated hard drive system, we've been pricing it around $15,000 to $20,000. And the mini tricaster runs around $13,000.
Anything else? Thank you very much, Pryor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Moving on to committee reports. That would be, let's see, utility committee first.
Utility committee. We met last week, I think it was. Talked about the storm sewer there over by Host Door they're building on. To the south side, yeah. The original storm sewer goes underneath the old building. It was moved quite a few years ago, but it wasn't actually moved out closer to the road where it should be. Now, since they want it built on, it's going to be right in the way. So as far as moving it, Dave Murray met with Host Door and discussed the project. Host Door could have applied for a revolving loan fund, but that takes six weeks to at least find out if you're approved. And then it's got to go through and everything, and they want to get this addition on so they can get it in this year's peak production. Host Door stated that they pay approximately two-thirds for the materials, which is $19,866. And if the city would pay the remainder, $12,500. Host Door would be buying the pipe and the fittings. The city doesn't stock it. And what the city's going to be furnishing would be the parts that we always keep in inventory or usually have on hand. We decided, plus then we'd also have a legal easement to get to, because right now we really don't have one. So we, the committee, decided it'd be a good thing to go ahead and do. So our recommendation is that we go ahead and pay for one-third, and they can pay for two-thirds of the material.
Can I make a comment just on the ROF portion of it?
Yes.
Just the timeframe. I know there's a timeframe issue. I mean, it could, based on the environmental review aspect of it, it could be something that would stretch out to six weeks. It doesn't take six weeks. It's just based on extenuating circumstances of whatever the specifics are with the environmental review that would be conducted to qualify for the funding could take that long. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Did you clarify that with Host Door?
I know that we have talked about it previously.
Okay. And then they just are ready, they want to move.
They take gamble six weeks away from when they need to occupy their space.
Four, six, right. So it was offered.
Right. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Can we have a motion to accept the utility committee's report?
Someone.
Second.
Motion moved by Counselor Coast and second by Counselor Frye. Is there any more discussion? Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Shamp?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Six eight zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. Finance committee.
The finance committee also met on Wednesday of last week. We had three different items or several items to go over. One of the first ones was the decision on the quote, "to change the locks within the municipal building." And I do believe there's a quote attached to the minutes that shows roughly $9,500. It was already determined that $2,500 of that had been previously approved with the EMS fire program with the keypad lock to their Madison door. So that actually brought this down to roughly $6,000 in potential new money to rekey the rest of the locks in the building. There again, the fire department will be utilizing keypad entry, which makes it easier with their turnover, their employee turnover as far as changing codes and that. The rest of the building locks will stay the traditional cylinder locks with keys. This includes an actual maintenance program or not, a safety program, an ongoing program where we can track the keys. And they'll be secured keys that can't be duplicated other than through this vendor. And it was decided, it was also discussed also the keypad entry for the front and the back door. And the problem there is the front door being the two glass panes. We would have to have electricity in there somehow to trip the latch. So that's too expensive at this point in time. So that'll maintain a traditional cylinder key. And the committee did approve the quote, the estimate to go ahead and replace those locks. Now, after that, and that will be our recommendation. Other than that, the finance director went over with us the need for reallocating some money, and that will show up in both resolution and amendment, or motion form later on as far as expenditures showing up in areas that weren't budgeted, were moving money from fire wages to Lifestar because Lifestar continued the contract to the end of March. So it's just a matter, those are a matter of reallocating what line item the budget was in. As far as the one that amends the budget, that has to do with the supplies for the Host Door project that Jeff alluded to and the lock project here also. But our recommendation, that's the committee report, but the recommendation then is to go ahead with the lock program, the lock upgrade for the municipal building.
That's the only recommendation that you're giving?
Well, yes. I mean, the other part of it.
Is in resolution form?
Yes. And we certainly recommend that those be passed, but that in itself would probably not come before.
Okay. So we need a motion for the finance committee report?
So move. Second.
Motion moved by Counselor Sturts and second by Counselor Estrada. Is there any discussion? Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Shamp?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Six eight zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Tree commission.
Tree commission met on Wednesday, March 11th while it was going. There have been a couple tree memorials and a memorial tree promotion that they would like to see if they can't get a little more publicity on those memorials. They're also planning Arbor Day celebrations planned for the 24th of April at 10:30 at the middle school and 1 o'clock at Leggett Street School. And there's going to be a tree plant at each location. And the annual Tree City Awards Program will be held at Toledo Zoo this year on April 29th. And this should be our 22nd year as Tree City status. Kim Bowles is also attending her sophomore Tree Commission Academy year. And Ed Noff Sanger and Pete Carr had met and had some discussion on a property that Ed had bought close to Homecoming Park that is believed to be Chief Wausau's village. And hopefully, we'll have some more discussion in the future on that part and what we may or may not want to do with that.
Okay. Department head reports.
On March 31st, we met, the Community Reinvestment Area Board met, and we discussed tax abatement properties located within the City of Wausau. Just went over the properties, industrial, commercial. We have one residential property, I believe, also. It appears that all the properties that are under the tax abatement agreements are complying. So that's good news. We had two that their term had expired, so two dropped off the list. And I know that we're working on one current tax abatement application at the moment. So it looks like for 2015, we'll have at least one added to that list of tax abatement properties. With community development block grant, Wausau downtown revitalization in particular, environmental review for the streetscape activities, which will include benches, trash receptacles, ADA compliance, ramps, and crosswalks, that environmental review has been submitted to the state. So upon their approval and getting that documentation back, we should be able to move forward. Obviously, we'll be moving forward with bidding on the street crosswalks, but then potentially working with building and grounds and street committees to make those decisions and everything to move forward with that. With program year 2015, there's some extra requirements, public hearing, public participation requirements this year. There's a community development implementation strategy. I plan on holding or hopefully hold a public meeting on the 23rd. It would be in County Commissioner Chambers. Basically, this is just extra outreach, trying to garner projects that are potentially out there in the county, villages, townships, anything that any projects or entities can bring forward that could potentially help get funding through the community development block grant. So I'll have more information on that meeting as we move forward. But I will be sending a letter out to all the villages, townships, potential Chamber of Commerce, any other organizations to try to gather feedback on potential projects. That's about it right there.
David, is there any hope for the revolving loan fund money that we anticipated for Sarah's garden? I mean, is that not going to happen now?
No, we're still moving forward with that. There's just other, we're looking at other. I just talked to the state on Thursday when I was down there for application training, and the state's more than willing to find ways. We're just establishing that. That little ladder didn't come where that had national objectives.
So there's still hope for that grant to?
There's shining hope.
Okay, good deal.
So it's not completely off track.
Okay. All right, thank you.
The new ambulance has been in service for about a week or so. We've done between 12 and 13 inter-facilities transfers. Everything's gone very well, and the guys are working downstairs to improve on that.
12 and 13, the last week or so? I'm keeping a tally. Thank you. Okay, chief?
Well, you've met Tony Imber. He's our newest full-time officer. We've been working for the last couple of weeks to get him through all those testing. He was part-time for us and has been working quite well. We got him started a little bit earlier in his field training program since he had been with us. So he should be up and running by the end of the month, we hope. And you see in front of you that we have a letter of resignation or retirement for Ken Blankenship that will be taking effect in the middle of May. So we'll be looking for another replacement after he goes and going through that process again. Been working with Phil closely with the transfers. Our dispatchers are doing the actual dispatching for the Medicaid 5 on the transfers to keep track of the runs and logging them for them so that they have accurate billing amounts and mileages. And we're slowly getting through the process, but hopefully it will get smoothed out and we'll iron out all the bugs here in the next month or so. That's about it.
Thank you. Tom?
Keith was able to help me with a situation that was brought to our attention. We have a resident that seems to be dismantling cars in his backyard, and we're in the process. I believe we've turned it over to prosecution right now to try and get this eliminated. Also, I was in contact with ARS. You probably noticed a few couches popping up in boulevards. ARS does offer a service where they will come out to the site for a fee and remove that. And they just emailed it. I just got it today. So I have a list of the cost of those things. I suggested that they also post that list where you can buy your tickets so that people will be aware of that. We're going to post it around here. Because you just can't set that old couch up in the boulevard and expect it to disappear. But you can contact ARS, and on your pickup day, they will take it away. So we're working with that, and we will be starting to more aggressively go through. Now that the weather's cleared up, we're going to start doing the neighborhoods again and looking for the stuff that's accumulated over the winter, so.
Is this something new that ARS has started?
No, they've always offered it.
But it's just started in Wausau?
No, they've always offered this service where they have their pickup. It's just that they don't advertise it. And my question to them is, why don't they put it, you know, where you can buy your tickets at the Circle Cave and all that? Why don't they have a list there so that the residents know? Because, you know, if you don't have a truck or trailer to haul it out to the weigh station, then you're sort of stuck. But it's not that expensive, you know, 10, 15 bucks to get rid of a small item, maybe 25 to get rid of something bigger. But that service is available to people, so we're going to try and get that out there. That's it.
Do they put tickets on these couches before they put them out in the foot yard?
You call them.
You call them.
And ARS, they will take your name and number, and they will say, "It'll be this much money," and they bill you.
The only reason I ask is because ARS has seen a bunch of companies that people follow suit and just assume that if you throw your couch out there, that they'll pick it up?
Well, you have to call. You have to get, I mean, you just, you know, you don't, you just don't set it out there. And that's going to be the education side of it. Letting them know that service is available, but you have to make arrangements. We will have to look at that. If your pickup day is Tuesday, well, you could put that out there Monday night just like your trash, and it'll be gone on Tuesday.
Those fellows are saying.
Right. We will be following that up, so.
Anything else? Great. Thank you, David.
Okay, big movement on big projects in my arena. Lenfoot Street project is out for bids. It was first advertised on April 2nd, and will be accepting bids up until the end of this month, April 30th. Final construction estimate is a little bit north of $2.4 million. The ODOT-driven schedule calls for work to begin in November. The idea being that we can perhaps attract some contractors that would find it advantageous to keep their crews busy in the wintertime, doing the underground work for the new water mains, sanitary, and storm sewer. Could all be done through the winter. And about this time next year, they could get right to work on the stuff that we end up seeing and driving on. Anyway, an ODOT-driven schedule, and that's what it is. So we hope we attract some good interest and some competitive bids on that. The water reclamation plant screw pump project was awarded to Peterson Construction of Wapakoneta, Ohio. They have a track record closest to us and successfully doing the same thing, replacing their screw pumps at the City of Bryan's wastewater treatment plant in the last couple of years. I can't quote exactly when, but they do have direct experience, and their price was well below the engineer's estimate, which is good. The Shoup Avenue Tower Aeration and Mixing Equipment, that bid opened on March 31st. We had three bids. It is in the process of being awarded to Wise Electric of, I believe, Archibald. Engineer's estimate on that was about $130,000, and their bid was $121,200. So again, a good competitive bid. So that's in process as well. On the Lenfoot Street project, there are three problem Edison pulls. Edison, there is utility pulls. I believe Edison owns these three. And I've been working with them about finding solutions for their movement so that they can get out of the way of things that are, things with our project. So even with moving the sidewalks the way we did before, there's still these three pulls that are issues for them. Again, back to the Shoup Avenue Tank Aeration and Mixing Equipment. Toledo Edison says they're going to have our three-phase service back to the tank within two to three weeks maximum. So that should all coordinate and happen in an orderly fashion. Again, back on the Lenfoot Street project, we have to have different engineers, consultants, to do the inspection and construction engineering for that project versus the folks that did the design work. That's a new ODOT rule. Well, relatively new. It's changed since we've done Shoup Avenue. There's some good reasons behind their change in policy. Not necessarily good for us who end up paying the bills because we can't totally divorce ourselves from the folks that designed the project. They have to remain available to answer design questions for our contractor, potentially throughout the project. But by having a fresh set of eyes doing the construction engineering and inspection services, there's a check and balance built into that. So I've been checking with the folks that we have general services agreements with. Stan Tech has some folks available to fit the timeframe, and I'm working with them for
They have a track record closest to us and successfully doing the same thing, replacing their screw pumps at the city of Bryan's wastewater treatment plant. In the last couple of years, I can't quote you exactly when, but they do have direct experience and their price was well below the engineer's estimate, which is good. The Shoup Avenue Tower Aeration and Mixing Equipment, that bid opened on March 31st. We had three bids. It is in the process of being awarded to Wise Electric of, I believe, Archibald. Engineer's estimate on that was about 130,000 and their bid was 121,200. So again, a good, good competitive bid. So that's in process as well. On the Lynnfoot Street project, there are three problem Edison polls, Edison, there are utility polls. I, I believe Edison owns these three. And I've been working with, with them about finding solutions for their movement so they can get out of the way of things that are, things with our project. So even with moving the sidewalks the way we did before, there's still these three polls that are issues for them. Again, back to the Shoup Avenue Tank Aeration and Mixing Equipment. Toledo Edison says they're going to have our three-phase service back to the tank within two to three weeks maximum. So that should all coordinate and happen in orderly fashion. Again, back on the Lynnfoot Street project, we have to have different engineers, consultants, to do the inspection and construction engineering for that project versus the folks that did the design work. That's a, a new ODOT rule, well, relatively new. It's changed since we've done Shoup Avenue. There's some good reasons behind their, their change in policy. Not necessarily good for us who end up paying the bills because we can't totally divorce ourselves from the folks that designed the project. They have to remain available to answer design questions for our contractor, potentially throughout the project. But by having a fresh set of eyes doing the construction engineering and inspection services, there's a, there's a check and balance built into that. So I've been checking with the folks that we have general services agreements with. Stan Tech has some folks available to fit the timeframe. And I'm working with, with them for basically negotiations on, on how much it's gonna cost us. I, I think will be right in the ballpark that we expected or below perhaps with Peterman's head we stayed with them. So lots going on. And if you guys are interested, we can, we can approach ARS about us having a spring cleanup again at some point in time. We obviously didn't plan for it in this year's budget. But we do have some experience of having that service for a number of years, not having it for a period of time, and then going back to it and now not having it. So I can track with some accuracy what we can expect as far as amounts of tonnage. And we can translate that with ARS's help into today's prices. But when you don't have the service for even a couple of years, the amount that you receive the first time is considerably higher than what it would be if you had, had one every year, so.
Dennis, manpower wise, fall or spring for better for the spring, for the cleanup?
Either one is feasible if we plan for it. The planning for it's the big thing. And then you never know with Mother Nature if you're gonna have a nicer spring or a nicer fall.
Right, right.
So, I mean, that's, that's kind of a, a guess. But our manpower is not a super significant cost in the overall picture. There's not, there's not that much overtime involved. Because it doesn't take too many guys to run the service. Through the years, we've, we've got that down to a science.
Boy, that'd be a good idea to get back into that one.
It's definitely something that folks appreciate. It, it is not without its problems. There's literally no way to ensure that you don't receive trash from outside the city boundaries, no matter what you do.
Right.
So.
And then real quick on that Lynnfoot Street, that's bigger sidewalks, what size?
Yes, sir. Yes, six-foot sidewalks.
Anything else for Dennis?
All the way down from Attiki all the way down to Hager Bay, yeah, okay.
Okay, Jamie?
I provided you with the March year, month-end reports as well as that income tax revenue, which I wanted to point out. Year-to-date figure is over a million dollars and that's the first time that's ever happened here. So it's looking like a pretty big year, it's up 13.45 percent.
Okay, anything else?
I don't want to leave that out.
Okay, yeah.
Been spending a lot of time or devoting time to real estate matters. We do have the easements finally recorded for the Glenwood Corridor. Those have been, as I say, recorded. And Toledo Edison has confirmed receipt of the originals, so we should be good to go out there. Been working with Dennis and then also the attorney for the Northwest Ohio Rails to Trails folks on the easement that Dover, the Dover, yes-
Rover.
Rover, Rover. Red Rover. Dover, Rover. Anyway, that they've requested. And we have some, based on those conversations, some comments to the Rover folks which have been passed on to the legal department and waiting for their response to those. And then also working with Dennis on the finalizing the transfer of the Ball Diamond property to the school. We just been making sure that we preserve, we're discussing the easement language for the utilities that underlie some of the property that will be transferred, wanting to make sure that both sides are happy with the language and equally protected and just in giving the city the ability to service those if necessary without undue cost to the, to the city. And the school's been great to work with, we're just going through that discussion process. Few other pieces of real estate, but, other than have been dealt with, but those are the primary ones.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, let's move on to our legislation readings. First reading, Resolution 2015-13, amend ordinance 2014-16, annual appropriation ordinance by authorizing the Director of Finance to increase or decrease certain line item appropriations within various funds listed within the year of 2015.
First reading.
Second.
Motion moved by Consular Chamberlain and second by Consular Shamp. Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Shamp?
Yes.
Consular Estrada?
Yes.
Consular Coast?
Yes.
Consular Sturts?
Yes.
Consular Frye?
Yes.
Six eight zero nays, Resolution 2015-13 passes and is now in effect.
Second reading, Ordinance 2015-5, amending section 505.01 of the codified ordinances of the city of Waseon, dogs, dogs running at large, dangerous or vicious dogs. Second reading.
Second.
Motion moved by Consular Coast and second by Consular Sturts. Is there any discussion? Consular Coast?
Yes.
Consular Sturts?
Yes.
Consular Estrada?
Yes.
Consular Shamp?
Yes.
Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Frye?
Yes.
Six eight zero nays, Ordinance 2015-5 passes on second reading.
Resolution 2015-11, authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with Arcadis for biosolid study for water reclamation plant.
So move. Second.
Motion moved by Consular Frye and second by Consular Chamberlain. Is there any discussion? Consular Frye?
Yes.
Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Sturts?
Yes.
Consular Shamp?
Yes.
Consular Estrada?
Yes.
Consular Coast?
Yes.
Six eight zero nays, Resolution 2015-11 passes on second reading.
Thank you. Nothing under third reading, moving on to new business. Need a motion to accept the letter of retirement from Ken Blankenship effective May 18, 2015. So move.
Second.
Motion moved by Consular Coast and second by Consular Estrada. Consular Coast?
Yes.
Consular Estrada?
Yes.
Consular Shamp?
Yes.
Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Sturts?
Yes.
Consular Frye?
Yes.
Six eight zero nays, motion carries.
And second, we have reallocated from the General Fund for Livestar Services from January through March 2015 and fires EMS employee physicals.
So move. Second.
Motion moved by Consular Shamp and second by Consular Estrada. Consular Shamp?
Yes.
Consular Estrada?
Yes.
Consular Coast?
Yes.
Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Sturts?
Yes.
Consular Frye?
Yes.
Six eight zero nays, motion carries.
Anything else under new business before we pay the bills? Okay. Need a motion to put the bills, please. So move.
Motion moved by Consular Coast and second by Consular Frye. Consular Coast?
Yes.
Consular Frye?
Yes.
Consular Estrada?
Yes.
Consular Shamp?
Yes.
Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Sturts?
Yes.
Six eight zero nays, motion carries.
Motion taken.
So move. Second.
Motion moved by Consular Shamp and second by Consular Chamberlain for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.